Call the Planning Commission for July 17, 2025 together. We'll do a roll call first.
Chris Crowley, Patrick O'Brien.
Here.
John Cost, Vivian Diggs.
Here.
Garfield Parker.
Here.
Alan Garland, Roger McKinley.
Here.
Charles Williams.
Here.
Heidi Wilkins-Cord.
Here.
We do have a forum.
All right, okay. Okay, let's go to our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Implication first, my father, I thank you this day for another beautiful day. I thank you for allowing us the opportunity to participate in new government, to participate in planning. We thank you, we thank you for your guidance and direction in Jesus' name, my very man.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of its essence.
All right, thank you, okay. You have the agenda before you. Approval for the agenda?
Motion approved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval for the minutes for the June 18, 2025 meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go to the Commissioners' comments. Mr. McKinley?
I guess I'll save my comments because they're going to come up later about the compliances. No, I don't have anything special.
Okay, Charles?
Nothing right now, nothing special.
All right, you're most agreeable, okay. Anything Stuart, for Staff members comment?
Just a reminder that the next meeting is going to be off schedule, it'll be the 28th, and depending on what we do here tonight, if y'all do recommend for the Board of Supervisors, I can advertise for a public hearing on August 28th, if that's y'all's wish. In addition, I would like to remind you that the Comprehensive Plan is a land use document and a growth plan, so you will need to use the little sheets that I have of that phrase before you make your motion, because that needs to be said before any land use decision or zoning decision, so just a reminder for that. But that's all I really have, is that we have a week later meeting next month.
Okay. Citizens' comment.
Not today.
And not today. For those that are online or social media, whichever, welcome to the Planning Commission for this date, July 17th. If you have something that you'd like to say or concerning the community or concerning us, our well-being, please feel free to do so at this time. All right, is there anyone online?
Only Mr. Haney.
And thank you, all right. Let's go to the public hearing items, Stuart.
We don't have a public hearing tonight.
No public hearing meetings tonight, all right. Work session items, the final review of the draft of the Comprehensive Plan revisions.
I'm not sure how y'all like to go about this. I've got all the files here, and I know from past conversations, y'all don't really want to go through it page by page, and I don't particularly either. But whatever y'all, however you'd like to do, if you have certain sections, we can go to those sections. You've had it for, I don't know, two, three weeks now, so hopefully everybody had a chance to read it. You know, I'm comfortable with it, and you know, unless, I mean, if y'all have something, we can, you have issues or something you think we left out, or...
I'll start with Mr. McKinley.
I'm good.
Okay, Charles?
I feel the same way.
I'm good.
I think it's a tada.
Okay, seems like everyone is in agreement that the, what we have is okay, and I guess the next step is to send it to the board?
Yes, sir, make a recommend, make a motion to recommend it to the Board of Supervisors, but with the knowledge that I'm going to, we're going to have to send it to the state agency before it gets to the Board of Supervisors for review.
All right, is there...
So moved.
Okay, can't be so moved, has to be, gotta do this.
Well, okay, this motion is made in due consideration of the administrative record before the body, including the planning commission's deliberations and recommendation, the information received via the public hearing, which it hasn't heard yet, including statements offered by staff, the applicant, and members of the public, the public health and safety, the general welfare of the community, public necessity convenience, and the exercise of good zoning practices and the body's legislative prerogatives, and pursuant to the body's statutory authority, I move that the planning, the planning document be forwarded to the relevant agencies and then to the Board of Supervisors.
I'll second.
Second.
And I move that we here, hold a public hearing on this matter on the 28th of August.
Okay, do you want to do that, can we do that all in one motion, or just keep the same?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why not.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And did Mr. McKinley second that, or did Mr. Parker?
Mr. McKinley.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well...
Are there any discussion items?
No. Well, yeah, I guess we can use the discussion items to talk about the pier, the memo from the Board of Supervisors regarding the pier. I mean, they basically said, you know, permission to request by the Planning Commission to investigate gazebo zone piers. At the July 10th monthly meeting, the Board of Supervisors, the board voted to approve the Planning Commission's request to investigate open-sided gazebo to the county's zoning ordinance. So they've given us permission to do that. As I had mentioned before the meeting, Mr. Marston, the zoning administrator, is on vacation this week, so I don't really feel comfortable really getting too far in the weeds, but we're happy, we can discuss it all you would like, and as I'm, as I think I mentioned at previous meetings, Mr. Marston had mentioned thinking that how we would fit this into zoning ordinance, was that we would kind of piggyback it on the boathouse ordinance. Currently, the boathouse ordinance, you're allowed a boathouse if it meets the certain parameters that the VMRC puts out, six, 700 square feet?
700.
700 square feet for a boathouse. And then if no, and then we notify, the county notifies all the neighboring landowners, and if none of the neighboring landowners object, then the county issues a permit. If one of the neighboring landowners objects, then it goes to conditional use, okay. So this is basically, he envisages the same way, as we would change the name of the ordinance, the boathouse ordinance, the boathouse, and we could call it gazebo if he wants to, or open-sided shelters or whatever, and basically have the same criteria that, while the open-sided structure cannot be more than 400 square feet, so it's smaller than a house, which is 700 square feet, and then that if we notify the neighbors, then, and none of them, none of them object, then it's the county that issues them a permit. Now, if somebody objects, then they have to spend $1,000 to go to the conditional use permit.
That way, that triggers a public hearing.
Right, and just like the boathouses do, and VMRC, Mr. Madden is the representative for our area, he said that in VMRC's, let me back up, hold on. I believe if somebody objects, then it goes to VMRC for a public hearing.
Uh huh.
Okay, that's the way I understand it, is that, that if someone's objects, then it goes down to Fort Moreau, and then they, they hear it down there, so that means we'd have, they would have to drive down to Newport News, and I'll get clarification on that.
Okay.
But I believe that's what it is, and then after they come here, I'm not sure if it's necessary for the county to have another conditional use permit hearing, and that's something we need to work out.
Yeah, I think the county comes first, then you go to VMRC.
Oh, county comes first?
VMRC won't hear it unless the county is...
Okay, okay, so you do the congressional use here, and then you're not done, you still have to go down to VMRC.
Okay.
If somebody objects.
Right.
Can a homeowner have an open-sided shelter and a boathouse on the same dock? If, I mean, all things...
Yes.
Okay.
Now, you can't have a gazebo 100 foot from the water, because you're not allowed to have, not supposed to have structures in a 100-foot buffer, so, but you can have it out over the water.
I don't think you can have two docks, can you?
No, no, you can't have two docks, it'd have to be one dock with a shelter and a boathouse.
Now, at this point in time, we're allowed 400 square feet of appendages, like an L
or a T or a step-down.
Is that in addition to?
I don't know, if you're, can you have that 400 and another 400 with the gazebo?
I think, I think, I don't know, I mean, it's all new to me, you know.
That's a good question.
That's where you would put it, I mean, normally piers are six feet wide, you couldn't put a gazebo on it unless you had an L or a T or some kind of a platform out there to put it on. But Patrick, I think you have a misconception of what a gazebo is, it doesn't have anything to do with boats, or launching boats, or anything...
I own a gazebo.
Okay, is it on a dock?
No, it's on land. So, we're, we're talking about here is an open-sided partial shelter for use next to a boat.
I've built several gazebo's, and they're much more than an open-sided structure.
As defined by VMRC, it's an open-sided shelter.
That's fine.
Right.
It's not just a shed, I mean, it's...
Well, it's going by definite...
Yeah.
By the nature of a dock, it's going to be rectangular, right?
No, it'll have eight sides, and the roof will be in eight parcels, eight different sections, and it's got gingerbread along the sides, I mean...
Okay, would you, Stuart, let's go back to the VMRC definition.
It's right here, it's right up there.
And it says?
It says, first it talks about boat slips, you would like me to read that, or I can just start in the middle, but...
Start in the middle.
Okay, or the open-sided shelter roofs or gazebo structures, it doesn't make sense, exceeds 400 square feet, let me start over. Subject to any applicable local ordinances, which is what we would have in place, that we have to have an ordinance in place for this to happen, which is what we're investigating, such piers may include an attached boat lift and an open-sided roof designed to shelter a single boat slip or boat lift. In cases in which open-sided roof designs to shelter a single boat, boat slip or boat lift will exceed square hundred foot, 700 square foot in coverage, or the open shelter roofs or gazebo structures exceed 400 square foot, and in cases in which adjoining property owners object to a proposed roof structure, permits will be required as provided in, in section 28-2-1204, and this is 28-3-1202. So, so basically, this is talking about that, that these are the exceptions, if you exceed the size, if you exceed 700 square foot, that triggers the hearing, and if it's an open-sided shelter roof exceeds 400, that triggers the hearing too. That's the way I understand it. And here's your aggregate, and this says, L or T head platforms and appropriate floating dock platforms do not exceed in the aggregate 400 square feet.
Does that mean including the gazebo?
That's what in the aggregate means.
Okay.
All together now. And, I mean, if anybody doesn't agree with that, let me know, but that's the way I read it, is that in the aggregate means that...
I think we need a clarification on that. If you just have a six-foot pier, you can't put a 400-square-foot gazebo on it, it's not big enough, so you need some type of a platform, an L or a T or a step-down in order to put this gazebo on there.
Well, there you go, you either have a dock, L or T, or you have a shelter, L or T, I mean, that's the way I understand it. I don't, I don't know, you know, like I said, I don't deal with this, it's Mr. Marston's job description, so...
Maybe we can get clarification from Mr. Madden of VMRC.
Well, what exactly is your question? Because I want to make sure that we get it right.
At this point, we're allowed 400 square feet of appendages, L or a T or a step-down or fish cleaning station, 400 square feet. We want to build a gazebo, that takes up the 400 square feet, can we do both? I guess is my question. We have 400 feet of appendages and 400 square feet of gazebo?
I would gather to say I don't think so, but we will ask Mr. Madden, and we'll have an answer at the next meeting.
You said the roof that you built had eight passages?
Yep, but it was, it was probably bigger than 400 square feet.
What if somebody wants to put a A roof on it, is that still a gazebo?
Sure, I would think so. I don't know what the true definition of gazebo is, other than a roofed structure, but what we've built is much more than just a roofed structure.
The ones that I see, including my own, are, tend to be more elaborate than that.
Yes. If you're a gazebo on the land...
Did you see the photos at the, of the gazebo's they were talking about at the last meeting, or the meeting before that?
I was here, I don't remember seeing the photo.
I told him to bring some photos when he went to the board for it, they needed to have some good pictures of it.
I didn't show any photos.
I thought somebody did.
Yours is on land or on the dock?
It's on land.
Maybe it's a boat canopy you were thinking of? We did a couple years ago.
Is it inside?
From what I understand, King George, Middlesex, and Essex have them, so, you know, I guess we could ask Mr. Madden if he, if he knows, or we could, Philip could call King George or Essex and see if they have any photos of them.
As long as you're going to be on the phone with them anyway, what is their, what is their objection to screening, other side of the gazebo?
He, he said in his email, it says, "Open-sided means no doors, no screens, no walls."
No curtains?
Nothing.
No cheesecloth?
Nope.
No roof?
Oversized.
That's all you get, a roof and a couple of poles to hold it up.
Well, that's all you get with a boathouse, is a roof and a couple of poles.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I'll ask him about that, but they're very adamant about it being open-sided, and then...
Even do a screen.
To Roger's point, what's the, what's the point of having one without screening?
Exactly, I mean, why would you want one?
Yeah, I lean on that a little bit.
Yeah, it's non-negotiable, I'm telling you, I mean...
I still lean on it, I just don't...
Everything is negotiable. Ask him anyway, please.
Yeah, and you want me to ask him why we can't have screen on it, is that what you'd like to be asked?
Yeah, yeah, I find it hard to believe they're the, we're the first person to question this.
I would also check with the adjoining counties to see if they allow screening on their gazebo's.
None of the adjoining counties allow gazebo's.
Oh, they don't allow them at all?
Lancaster doesn't allow boathouses.
Well, I know that.
King George, Middlesex, and Essex.
Allow.
I understand, allow gazebo's. That's what Mr. Kapal Yubinsky said at the last meeting.
Well, if you could check with one of those counties to see if they allow screening on the gazebo's that they are permitting.
If they do, they're against the state law.
Does the state law specifically state screening, or is this just an assumption?
Mr. Mont Madden, in his email to Philip before the last meeting, says it is an open-sided structure with no doors, no screens, and no walls.
Per the state?
Per Jeff Madden, VMRC...
There's nothing in that regulation that says a screen, is there?
I understand that, but it does say open-sided.
Okay, so we have some random bureaucrat who has spoken and...
No, he's the one that signs all of, on every wetland permit in this county.
Obscure bureaucrat who almost, almost obey, is what you're saying.
If that's what you want to call them, that's not...
That's exactly what I call them.
He's been in the business for 30-plus years as VMRC rep of this area.
Most people think he's pretty reasonable, but...
Very reasonable, I mean, you're dealing on bulkhead and...
Well, I'm sure a little better, have a better reason for it than, it's always been that way.
Yeah, I would expect, because of the high winds associated in a marine environment, they probably don't want the screen to deteriorate with the sun, and then get blown into the waterways and cause problems with habitat and animals and fishes and things of that nature.
One can, one can assume anything they like, but, and your assumption seems to make sense, I would like to see if that's the reason why the VMRC's obscure bureaucrat doesn't like them.
Well, some screenings are pretty dark, and they could also impede people's view where the open-sided would not, I mean, that's the reason for boathouses being open-sided, is to keep your neighbor's view intact.
I know where it's one gazebo that's, that's pretty big.
Does it look like a lighthouse?
Looks like a lighthouse.
In the Port Fairport?
Huh? What, how did that crawl through the crack?
You'd have to ask Mr. Marston.
Okay.
I have no idea.
I mean, I don't object to it, I think it looks nice.
Yeah, they had a public hearing, Board of Supervisors approved it.
Okay. Wow. Well, the state didn't get involved with that, then?
Oh, they're always involved, anything over state waters.
Well, they must have approved it too, or turned their back on it.
I wasn't.
One would hope so.
All right.
In addition to that email, and if you want me to email about this, I'll be glad to do that too, he said that VMRC determines that the adjacent landowner is one that shares a property line, so if you're across the creek, your opinion does not matter, and you can object all you want, and it won't trigger anything, so it's, it's those that share a property line.
As a practical matter, what Heidi brought up, and your guess as to what the basis of his opinion is, since it's not found in the regs. Let's find out why, you know, why he's talking about, about this, as if it were the law.
I think if it doesn't specifically prohibit it, then there's a possibility you could get it written.
And I see nothing in the nature of a specific prohibition.
I don't know.
Open-sided shelter means to me that you can walk completely around and through the building, back and forth.
You should work for VMRC.
No, don't wish that on him.
I, I don't see why y'all trying to push it, I mean, we're getting something that we don't have, and now you want to make it even more past what the state does, and I'm not sure that's a good way to go about it.
We've got a monthly...
I don't think we're making it more, we're making it less restrictive, is what we're arguing in conversation, is that right?
We're making, we're making, we're offering an option for citizens to be able to have a sun shelter on their dock, so we're opening up off buildings.
That's a good thing, yeah.
And with the amount of rain we've got, anywhere in this county, you're going to have skaters out the wazoo, and...
No seums.
Yeah, yeah, but I am the messenger here, I'm not the one that came up with this policy, I'm just relaying...
Do we not go shoot you?
Okay, and if you'd like, I think I have his email right here, if you would like to read it, or I would be glad to read it, I'll try and clear it up. Section 28, this was dated June 18, 2025, section 282-1203, which is what we were just looking at, five exempt open-sided gazebo's that are 400 square feet or less, provided neighbors don't object. Where the adjacent property owners object, a permit is required. We interpret adjacent property owners as those who share a property line on the waterfront with the applicant, and not the guy across the creek. I hope this helps, trying to emphasize that open-sided means wa, means walls or, well, it says means walls or doors at all, but he meant to say no walls or no doors, but as I read it tonight, it says means walls or doors at all, so...
We're not talking about walls or doors.
Well, that would be one reason to call him, is to clarify that last sentence.
Okay.
But is this a, somewhere embedded in VMRC regs, or is this just the sky?
Well, he just showed the code section, 28.2, and it doesn't say anything about screen, it just says open-sided.
That was Jeff's interpretation.
What, what...
But he quoted the code section when he did it.
What, what constitutes open-sided, the screens?
Good question.
We'll find out.
Yep, so all you can do is find out, Mr. Marston may have something like it on it, but I'm interested...
I'll show it to you and write it.
That's all I, I'm going to present it to you all.
They got another email. In my opinion.
If it wasn't written down, it didn't happen.
All right, any more discussion about that?
Why are you looking at me?
Any more discussion? Just, just, just something to say?
We can't do anything to the 28th, and anyway.
Okay.
Of August.
All right.
So we'll have plenty of time to cogitate on the matter.
All right, let's move on. Board of Supervisors' report.
I was not, I was on vacation, so I did not attend it.
Okay, all right, I didn't attend it either.
They voted to refer the matter back to us on the question of what is open-sided? And what is a gazebo?
I may have a report from the school board auditor guy, that the shortage is not as terrible as it was last month, so it's like 400,000 deficit for this year instead of a million.
They moved some money around in some categories.
I'm just saying what happened.
No, that's... Yeah, okay, well, that's, either way, it's good news.
It is good news.
Yeah, it's good news.
But they can't rescind the 8% increase in the budget.
When you say they can't rescind it, that mean they're not going to take it back?
It's already done deal.
Done deal, okay.
Well, maybe they'll fund some capital in three months.
Well, I can always, you know, recall the matter, re-hear it, and come up with a 4% rate.
Yeah, the government just did that today for $9 billion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they didn't have it.
To start with.
Okay.
There was a, a public hearing, because let's, Public input on local community development and housing needs in relation to a community development block grant, funding for a project in our community. The community block grant is basically to reduce and improve, basically, minimum housing standards, so that individuals of low income will have a roof over their head, no leaking, and functioning septic system, and things of that nature. I was on, I worked with the county and trying to identify the area of this, and the, the discuss, well, basically, the concentration of those low-income houses was on Lampkin Town Road, so they'll be, they're, this is basically authorizing the Plain District to, to put together a grant package to help rehabilitate houses down in... package to help rehabilitate houses down in Lampkin Town Road, like we did in Light Street a decade ago.
Yeah, about 10 years ago. Good.
And it says that it was passed. So, you know, whether there's any money in the Department of Community and Housing Development, that's remained to be seen.
Okay. All right.
That's it for the board?
Yeah, that was all the public hearings, just that one.
All right. Anything else?
Public comments?
Anything?
Just nothing big.
Okay.
The definition of neighbors and sharing property lines does not omit property lines that are actually on the water. A case in point is my own property. If I was to do a gazebo, as Stuart has outlined through Jeff Madden's email there, I guarantee you the guy across the creek would have the right to say something about it because he's got a property line in common with me, even though it's on the water, in the water, because that land is deeded all the way from the water down, surface down to the floor of the water. That's all I was going to say about that one. And...
Where is that? How is your property arranged so that that's true? It, how far across, is he across the creek from you, or on the same side of the creek?
So the property line that we have in common actually runs in the center of the creek.
Where, what's that?
So I've got, you buy a lot in my neighborhood, you're actually buying two lots. You're buying the one on the water, and you're buying the one that's land.
And it's King's Grant land?
Yeah.
And that was proven in court.
Is that on Carter Coop?
Huh?
Is that in Lancaster County?
No, it's right here in Northumberland.
What body of water is it?
Owen's Pond. Is it around Twin Harbor or Owen's Pond?
It's over there in Shoreline Estates.
Up to Wycomico? The great Wycomico up there?
No.
No, Shoreline Estates is off of Fleeton.
Yeah, right off.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so the land is deeded. You've got a deed, for example, you've got, your primary lot is, in my case, 22 and 23, and then you've got 22A, which is the one on the water. I pay taxes on it.
Was that property previously on dry land? Is that the way that, why that's like that?
No, if it was ever on dry land, it was many millions of years ago. It was landlocked.
Twin Harbor, I think, is the same way.
Yeah.
Yeah. Twin Harbor is in fact...
Oh, that one's fine.
From what I understand, at some point in history, you have to have, you have to have a, some kind of court order, that research that you can trace your land back to a specific King's Grant from England. And that, that King's Grant grants the bottom of the creek as well.
There's, there's a bunch of them over there in District 5.
Owen's Pond was a pond. That's why they called it that. Now...
It's been kind of locked up.
Well, it's, it's, it's open to the bay.
Right.
And that property, George Little owned that, and he, he went pretty high up in court to get that ruled in his favor.
Same old...
Where he owned the pond.
Right.
And you cannot, you can put crab pots in state waters, but that's not state bottom inside of there. If you put a crab pot on there, it needs to be floating. It can't touch the bottom, or it's on his property.
Right. I think Gaskin's Pond's got its own story as well.
Yeah, I think it's similar.
But bottom line is whether, whether it's state or not is muddy. The waters are muddy. Excuse me. I know we all live by muddy water, but it's, it's, it's not quite as clear as that, that email would, would make it seem. Because I know that even if the creek that my house sits on is likely not state land because of the situation that Stuart is talking about, it would be subject to the, to the ordinance that's being discussed. So it's not quite that clean. Outside of that, I don't really have anything else to pursue right now, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Well, that's good information to have, for sure.
All right. Is there anyone online that would like to have a comment? Public comment? Okay, all right.
We seem to put them to sleep.
All right. I'll close public comments then. Stuart? And our next meeting will be August 28 at 7:00 PM. All right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Turner.
Motion to adjourn, move to second. All in favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned. Thank you so much.